Let's get this beautiful looking soul. What a beautiful soul you have. What a shame it's all hidden away under the deceit and terror of your own hypothesis. Under the law, you've just broken it. Well, this is going to be very interesting now. The police aiding and abetting. Eh? Yeah, because they're looking now to see, have we broken the door in? And we haven't, we've got the keys. What, have you, have you been recording it? Oh, this is a lovely, lovely picture. What a lovely picture we've got here. I'm supposed to be in the court today about this. Crown Court, would you like me to give you the reference number? PC terrorist. Haven't done a risk assessment, you don't know how many people are in here. And we've got all of these people here. I'm supposed to be at Crown Court today. I've got a contract here. Nobody has broken and entered this property except those individuals there. On the 29th of September, they came. Oh, look, let's get a lovely one for Chief Justice, Lady Chief Justice Carr. Yes, here we go. Have you got any other ID without committing fraud upon your soul? I know exactly who you are. Would you like to see the contract? Would you like to see the contract PC 24095 before you lose your job? There is, the warrant has already been put inside Crown Court. You're now in another jurisdiction. Admin has been proven to be unlawful and I'm supposed to be at the Crown Court today. I was hoping that you were going to come and give me a lift. Because these people here have stopped me from going by breaking an entry, proving the terrorism. Just a moment, I haven't finished. This is by live link into Crown Court. This is into Crown Court. Okay, so we're having the police overrule a Minister of Universal Law. After I put him on notice that this video is live by TVP link into Crown Court Birmingham today, relating to a case with Minister Emma Ven versus Birmingham City Council and all agents thereof. These particular individuals are now guilty of trespassing, aggravated trespass. And that's just in the civil. Under the law, you're now tampering with evidence and interfering with witnesses. The other people are afraid to be here because of the terrorism that was wrought upon them. Fortum over here, who's threatened that if we didn't move away from the door, he was going to angle grind our fingers off, also on record. He's come armed with a drill, I've got you on record. I do not make false claims. You, oh really, I'm going to shut up while you come armed. Terrorist, shame on you. For a thousand pounds a month, you do this. Shame on you. Yes, shame on you with your false claim. This case has already been in the court three times. Thank you for disclosing his fictional name. Bravo. And here they're laughing. Look at this one laughing. Do you get off on this, you narcissist? Do you get off on breaking the law and hiding behind a uniform? Do you? Suppose it's better than murdering people for a thousand pounds a month, isn't it? As a mercenary. So here we have our motley crew. This lady in particular here, she was responsible for instructing the police, which we've got them shaking the hands of on the 29th. She implied that she's got a warrant, but nobody here is. Oh, lovely. Oh, we've got it. Cousin It has come to say hi. Yeah, and wipe the coke from around your nose. Are fixing a bench warrant, you can spell it this time right, are you? Going to get a multitude of dates of birth, just to make sure you get it right. Hiding your face. You ought to remove that line, you might hang yourself with it. Might choke on your fake warrant, madam. Wonder what Lady Justice Stein's got to say to you about your lovely toilet paper warrant? Are you ashamed of the job that you do today? You weren't ashamed the other day when you came, were you? No, and that makes it all right, doesn't it? Your soul is nicely compromised with slave tokens. That's why you've just lost your job, madam. And you will go and work in the fields on a rehabilitation programme for people who are impartial to the truth and the law. They think. The rule of law, everybody being equal under it, doesn't matter what uniform you're wearing. If you go around breaking the law, using pieces of paper from already dissolved corporations, then this is what you're going to get. Oh, and a yawn, I wonder where you got that data from? Was that where you abused the data protection? Was it really? How did you then go and instruct a third party? How was it that you were instructed by a third party? Who is the claimant? Is it a non-entity? Oh, and then here we've got this one. This is the one who tried to run me over in the streets. Yes, he's a particularly lovely one, this one. Especially, oh lovely, thank you. Chief Justice Stein is so impressed. Bravo. Bravo. Mom is best. You're right. Off you go, terrorist. Oh, look, look, you haven't got your eyelashes stuck on today, right? I didn't recognise you there, love, sorry about that. And this one, who is more ashamed than he dare admit, and I would be as well, helping the Zionists. Shame on you. I bet your family are so impressed. I bet your ancestors are so proud of you, helping the Zionists. It's the last time we do this. The last time we did it was on the 29th. And today you've just sealed your fate. We've been waiting for you. Trace, oh, let's have one, let's have one, yeah. And you're bored of this and you're getting paid and you're bored. No, there's only rocks waiting for you. We use rocks as currency to pay you with. Or you can have a potato, help yourself. Then you wouldn't have to go around terrorising people here if you knew your own rights. You would know the difference between right and wrong for starters, but you weren't taught it when you were at school. Oh dear, do you need another line of coke, love? Yeah, looks like it. Looks like you do. Really? Is that another false claim you've got? Do you mean, do you mean Planet Earth? You're here, you are here on Planet Coke. So yes, you have come to the right place. And now we've got, who've we got here? Terrorist leader number two, I think. You see, the Aryan in you is so obvious. Your claim was rebutted and you don't even know that much. You come here pretending to enforce administrative acts and statutes and you don't even know about 28 day claim. Oh, here we've got the heavy artillery now. Now we know what it's like to be Palestinians, don't we? Now we know what it's like to be Palestinians. Hello, I'm a Palestinian too. UK RAIN refugee here. I'm supposed to be in the court, but these Aryan bastards here are trying to force their acts and statutes on us, aiding and abetting Zionism. So we've got a live link, TVP link, straight into Crown Court today, because that's where I was supposed to be. This case here, now we're going to get a beautiful one of the police smashing the doors in here. Have you, on what grounds are you here? 23663. 23663. Look what we've got going on here. Based on what lawful right are the police aiding and abetting a civil act? Wonder what it is that they've come for with their claim today? Hopefully it's to give me a lift to the Crown Court. I am still upstairs, I'm not going to do anything to you that you haven't already done to yourselves. On what grounds? On what grounds? On what grounds are you interfering with the witnesses? On what grounds? On what grounds are you interfering with the witnesses? On what grounds are you interfering with witnesses in a Crown Court case? What grounds? Tampering with the evidence and interfering with witnesses is what you're doing in the Crown Court case today. Bravo. Well done. And here we've got them coming on mass, interfering with witnesses. McDonald. No, love, okay, so, okay, can I just get my things because I'm approaching Crown Court? Thank you, I'll need these papers, thank you. I need those papers there. For a Crown Court case. No, I'm not going a consentingly, okay? You're going to have to put me under arrest?
That's fine, come on.
You put me under arrest?
Come on.
Put me under arrest? What am I under arrest for? What am I, really, breach of peace? Really, you call me breach of peace? You have come here in the name of peace, really? In the name of peace you do this, really? You have just got yourself seven years each in prison. All of my paperwork's upstairs, we've got an order here from the Crown Court. Here is the tenancy agreement here. There you are. You've now been served notice of from Solvency Solutions, a tenancy agreement already served in Crown Court for you, especially for you. Bravo. And so she needs to be arrested now. This is for seven years in prison. No? Well, it might be nine, it might be nine, we'll have to ask, okay? So I want to know why it is that you've just done this, on what lawful grounds? Do you know? Do you know why? Do you know why you just did that? 26782, 22841. Oh, we've already had yours slated before, haven't we? Before to skew or something? Assault. Yes, Sergeant wants an update. I'm supposed to be at Crown Court, Sergeant. And we've got all of our evidence in there for the case, which is why we have got the restitution writ inside a document upstairs. I can't believe you're actually aiding and abetting this, unbelievable. You've got a warrant? You've got a warrant? Pardon?
Yes, that's Lady Tander.
That isn't a warrant. No, it's not, we've already put that in Crown Court. And that's why I'm supposed to be at Crown Court today, like I told you over an hour ago.
Yeah, it was an hour ago. Listen, you said you wanted us here to give you a lift. It's West Midlands Police Service, isn't it, that taxi service? Not going to come here after all this and give you a lift.
Do you know who I am?
No.
No?
As you, that lady at Solid Offices last time, I do know who you are.
Do you know who I am, really? Who am I? Do you know who I am? Do you, can you prove that now?
Yeah, because you were arrested, that's why we came here, do you remember?
Really, wow, just go. You've got evidence in there that is supposed to be in the Crown Court this morning. I've just told you, we have got a writ of restitution from Worcester Crown Court and Birmingham Crown Court. I am supposed to be there. No, you're not interested in Crown Court. You're not interested in Crown Court cases, our evidence, all these witnesses that you have just harassed and assaulted and evicted. This is your court, you're on TVP link into the Crown. Yes, you're welcome. Lady Justice Stein, I want all of my stuff out of there now. So that I can go and make sure that you are sufficiently dealt with. Lovely, what a lovely one. Here we go, you come for the animals, have you? Leverage. Aren't they lovely? Aryans. I'm surprised at you helping the Zionists. Now you know what it's like to be Palestinian? Evicted. Only this time it's Israel who's going to be evicted. And this is how you've helped. Bravo, people, good on you. Any drills of any locks were done on the 29th? No locks have been drilled except the ones that these people did on the 29th of September, where we got them, we're not leaving the property, I want my things out of there because they are. My paperwork upstairs has got a writ, you need to be, because you're pretending to be a police officer, aren't you? Are you a police constable? This lady.
Do you wish to look at that paperwork?
I already saw that paperwork on the 29th and that's why I put myself into the dock. And this case is now in the dock in Crown Court because of what they did here on the 29th of September. That was recorded and sent to Lady Chief Justice Carr. There is an injunction against these people and you have just aided and abetted in interfering with witnesses and tampering with evidence. You have just breached a writ of restitution. You've got absolutely no idea what it is that you're doing. And I'm amazed at you, absolutely amazed that you are aiding and abetting Zionists. Look at this. Really, you don't know that you're aiding and abetting Zionism? Of what, upholding people's rights? I can't go until all of my things that are in there are back restored to me.
Instead of going round the court to go, wanting to get your stuff together?
Because then it was. Because it is, I'm not peacefully surrendering this. That's why. Your claim was being rebutted. And what you've just done here has breached every single administrative code practice rule. Bravo. And not only that, you're just going to put yourself in the dock. Because there is really, I don't lie, there is a Crown Court hearing today relating to this matter. Because I couldn't get out because I was surrounded by terrorists from the state. Oh, look, now I've got an offer to join the, are you, are you here as a police constable? Or are you here as a policy enforcer? Oh, well, you're a policy enforcer. You, I've just witnessed you breaking the law, sorry, I would say, impersonating a police officer. And if I wasn't dressed as I was, I would be doing to you what I did to PC Payne. Yeah, okay, well, you're ignoring the law. So no point in ending what you've already been doing since you swore your oath. Ignoring the law, look at her, she does it so well. You could all get a medal in ignoring the law, look at this one. Coke off his tits, this one. So are you not going to allow me to go and back into the property that hasn't been broken and entered? That the doors were taken off by a writ of execution by the Crown? And King's Bench? And now you've evicted the people? Oh, listen, we've got conspiring here, contriving. Loaded dice, this is. How did they break it? We didn't break it. Who broke it? Did you break the people's rights? Break back in with the keys. Shall we break back in with the keys? Do you know the difference? Do you know the difference about breaking in? You know that.
The sergeant, I think I'm going to speak to her. You wanted to speak to her a minute ago.
Who?
The sergeant.
You've got a sergeant?
Yeah.
Really? Okay, well, she can come here then. Oh, really, don't you? You don't know how any of it works. So I really, I'm not going to take legal advice off somebody who's not legally trained. And the fact that you're trying to give me it would mean that you have just broken your own code. Do you know what my lacquer is? Or would you like to Google it?
I'll Google it.
Before you get offended. I don't think that she's the sergeant, do you? Are you misinterpreting or misimpersonating a sergeant? No, you're not, are you a sergeant? No, but they did, you see? Right, so that's third party hearsay. We, yes, you are needed. These people have interfered with a Crown Court order today, madam. Are you the sergeant? I've got a, good morning, I'm Minister Emma Ven from Universal Law Community Trust. I was supposed to be at the Crown Court today regarding this case. Have you been snorting cocaine? Yes.
No, I've got a cold.
Okay. I'm just asking you.
Listen, if you want me to be respectful and listen to you, don't be rude.
We've got all these people confirming that they've been taking cocaine, that's why I'm asking you. On record, you just looked like you had.
Do I look like somebody who takes cocaine?
You do, unfortunately, yes, okay.
Do we need her to be here?
Yes, you do, because they're interfering with the witnesses, all of the evidence inside the Crown Court. There's a Crown Court case today, I'm putting you on notice that there is a Crown Court case today and all of the evidence is inside that building. All of the evidence is inside the building. All of the evidence inside the building and that is assault. Get your hands off me, you arsehole. This is the woman who's just assaulted me. Lady Justice Carr. This one here, yes, I was going to the court today. Yes, fancy dress, what have you come as, terrorist? Have you come as terrorist today, have you? Yes, you have. Oh, was it really? We've got a lovely confirmation there, we'll put you in the dock. This individual here, this sergeant, get your hands off me, touch me again, that's assault. That's, that, girl, because they think they've got the right, they just found out how wrong it is. And this individual here, who's implying that she is a sergeant, you've just aided and abetted interfering with witnesses and tampering with the evidence in a Crown Court case that has got an injunction on it from King's Bench, from the writ of restitution. It has got all of the evidence inside the building that you've now secured away from us. I'm unable to go to the court today because of these people who have obstructed the line of justice and perverted the course of a court case. They're in contempt of Lady Chief Justice. And she's still sniffing. Maybe you've got, maybe you've, okay, you need to stand away from the people and you could be infectious. Maybe it's Covid, maybe that's another unsubstantiated claim you'd like to go and enforce in the people of your community since the last three years. We want that evidence out of that house, madam. And you're going to give yourself a tumor, my lovely, off your lipo. I would, I would really wouldn't be instructing me on my health and wellbeing when you have tattooed your face to oblivion. Okay, so don't be giving, you haven't got a warrant. You have not, you haven't seen the warrant, madam. Would you like to see a writ of restitution? And now I'm going to show you the one that we got from the Crown Court. Here you are. Here is the application for an injunction from the Crown. From the Crown, I'm serving you notice, madam, that this is an injunction from Worcester Crown Court that this was annulled, do you see that? Really? Wow, you just overstepped and overreached and overruled your whole judicial system. And they're not interested. So she's only interested in shoddy paperwork from HMCTS. But this police constable has completely disregarded the injunction that we got from Worcester Crown Court. Well, are you going to talk to me about head eggs, really, when you come around? At least, at least I don't go around evicting people out of property without a contract, madam.
It's not your name on the fucking property, is it?
You know what my name is, you know, do you? Is it really? Well, when you kicked me out of here, I was Elizabeth last time, to make your mind up. If it was, I would share it with you because you definitely need it. He certainly does. Helping the Zionist, wow. Helping the Zionist and this one, unbelievable. Oh, really? Coke Land, I think we'll find that. Have you got the right to ask me what it is that I'm drinking? Really, you come here, you trespass at somebody's house, you obstruct. Oh, is it not, is it not my house, is it not? Oh, we've got some littering. Miss E. Pell. Oh, Miss E. Pell. I thought she was dead. You have just lost your job, madam. Yes. Have you called Birmingham Crown Court? Have you called Birmingham Crown Court today? Person impersonating a sergeant. You're on other people's property, they've smashed this door in here. We've got a lovely array here of terrorism straight in to the Crown with TVP link. Live at the UK RAIN refugee, where you're all refugees from the UK.
It's private property and you have no reason interfering with it.
Who is speaking? Can you hear somebody babbling and muttering and uttering? Yes, muttering and uttering in Babylonian bollocks. Yes, but you weren't taught it, you see. You think you're speaking English, when in actual fact, when you speak to these people over here, you're construed to be babbling Babylonian bollocks. I'm so bored with you that that's why I stake the place out, especially to get you today. Yes, you've been under a big blue asset management assessment and we've been collaborating evidence of the people and the terrorists that have been terrorising the community since 2013. Oh, and we, they've, now they're evicting the refugees' tents. Lovely. What a wonderful, what a wonderful picture. So here we have the companies making £113 million a year in profit for aiding and abetting refugees, that was just with Belvedere Hotels last year. And here we've got HMCTS aiding and abetted by the police here in order for them, oh, here we are. Now you need to make a complaint. These people have had their doors bashed in. I'm very sorry about this, they smashed your door in. They thought that it was our door and they smashed your door to break into the garden. Now, if I was you, I would make a complaint against the police for that. They smashed the door in. Well, it's better than taking yours, isn't it?
Cheers, Elizabeth.
Oh, wow, I'm Elizabeth Pell again today, am I?
No, Nelson.
Oh, am I? Am I? Can you prove that?
Yeah, I've got the record right here.
Have you, really? Wow. And when was it that that was fabricated? In the same way that your bench warrant was fabricated last time you came here? Would you like to?
I wouldn't lie to you for asking me.
Well, we've got a number of dates of birth for that particular title. And I can't possibly be Elizabeth Nelson because that would have meant that it had been trafficked.
You've got Elizabeth Nelson, Mr. Emma Ven 010. You've got something Pell, you've got quite a few names, to be fair.
Yeah, because you don't know which one it is. So you stick me with all of them. Do you know that I was evicted out of a property in Stoke as somebody called Robin McDonald? Really? I don't live here, right? I don't live here. I live in Ellis and you lot trafficked me here. Okay, no, because if I come, I'm not a nice woman. At least I don't go around wearing a uniform and stealing people's rights with fabricated pieces of paper. Did I really? Have you, can you prove that? Can you? Isn't that why we're not in the court today? Oh dear. You have to stand down. No, they've managed to fabricate some bench warrants now. That's why they're here now, to fabricate their bench warrants. And so we've got all of the property inside the house there, which constitutes the evidence that they've now re-secured, meaning that we are unable to conduct our case inside the Crown. Are you getting all of this? It's great. Look at him. What a fun man you are. I bet you're, yeah. Do you, do you have a little word? Chief Justice. We've got them all, yeah, we've got them all. You've been on the trailer and slipping down the street for the last 28 days and this is the final straw for you. Ah, and now off they go now. Off they go now, they're aided and abetted, the criminals. And so I'm, I think I'm just going to nip down to the court now and give them the update on this. Don't leave the premises, obviously. Well, all of our, all of our things, well, that this is the point, so I need an order from, I need to go down and give them notice now that they've breached the injunction and that they're now re-securing the evidence. After, I just want a copy of this. This is not your property. Okay, but it's not yours either. It's not yours. And I've got the right to come down here. Yes, I have, because I'm a friend of the neighbours who's doing just my job. They did already. And now, oh, now, look, oh, look what we've got. What a lovely, lovely man you are. And so, okay, oh, you're deciding, are you? So you are. I don't need to tell you. We've got anonymous, anonymous, I'm Elizabeth Ven. And the police just told you that. You what?
I don't need to do anything.
No, you don't, actually, you've done more than enough. You've done more than enough to say that you've now got yourselves incriminated fair enough for seven to nine years, I would imagine.
Well, I don't go around assaulting people like you.
Really? You, what, did you just think that was then, you silly little girl? Assaulting the people. Assaulting the woman's rights, her rights to shelter and you haven't assaulted them? You haven't terrorised these people? No, you don't like it, do you, when you have it back at you? Giving you a headache. I'm surprised blinking and breathing doesn't give you a headache. You complete imbecile. We want our resources and now they've stolen our access to our resources using force. You need to stand down. And now the police have gone, upgrading and abetting these people. No assistance whatsoever. All of our evidence inside the building again now. Do you want to come as a witness?
Yeah, I can be.
Yeah. Let's have a little chat over here. So I've got them on here now, live with a TVP link.